All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Milton School Committee of June 16, 2021. The first order of business is to approve the agenda of June 16, 2021. Oh, the, the, sorry. We need to put it on the agenda so I remember. We were home for so long, I can't remember. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Mr. Jett. All right. I have a few adjustments to the agenda. I'm going to remove Finance Subcommittee Report as there are no vendor warrants to approve. So number six, I'm going to remove. I'm going to remove approval of minutes as I'm not sure that everyone had the opportunity to read them over. And after Citizen Speak, I'm going to add acknowledgement. Is there any other changes that anyone would like to make to the agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's five, zero. Great. All right, we're going to start with Citizen Speak. We have one member of the community here for Citizen Speak, Mr. Rob Burke. Mr. Burke, if you would like to approach the table, please. I will, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Burke, thank you. If you would so kindly keep your minutes, keep your comments to three minutes. Just state your name and your address for the records, okay? And welcome, thank you.
My name is Robert Burke. I live at 297 Pleasant Street, Milton. Our family's lived in Milton for 125 years, and I'm so happy to be here today. Good evening, Ms. Denny, Ms. Dexter, Mr. Jett, Ms. Everhart, Ms. Rose, Dr. Greghead, Rose Marin, and Ms. Carol. Good evening. I am, been identified as a man. I was a person outside of the schools with my sign. Critical race theory destroys children. It's an ideological argument, has nothing to do with race. I'm here to say to you that I went to these schools, I love this town, and I can't say enough about you folks being elected. You've done a good job, so this is why I'm here. I want the Milton Public Schools to move forward, not backwards, not sideways. And I'd like to ask the committee to make sure when we talk about each and every student, we talk about what their capabilities are, not what they look like. I am a person of color. I know what it is to have the police come to my house and accuse me of doing something which was wrong. I was a redhead. I represent .5% of the total population of the world. My mother threw that police officer out of my house. There's a lot of things that's happened in this town since last year. Whether it's the George Floyd innocent incident, which was terrible. Mr. Floyd should never have been killed by anybody. But I blame Senator Amy Klobuchar. She had 14 times to get rid of that police officer, and she did nothing. People should be on her talking, why didn't she do anything? We're moving forward here. I noticed, the reason I came was to have that Zoom call released. You have a public employee. Unfortunately, Zoom call got pushed all over the place. I saw her on TV, on radio, I heard her on radio, every newspaper. We need to know what that was all about. I want people to learn everything. Poetry? I'm not, wasn't great in school. We have a new, I think we have a new person coming on, I may be wrong, to go through the whole curriculum. What are we talking about equity about? What exactly is that definition? We need to get to that. I want to know about it. I want to learn about it. I want the town of Milton not to be labeled as some bunch of screwballs, but someone says, hey, here's one point of an argument with Langston Hughes. Here's another point of an argument with Nikki Giovanni. I want to know that. And when are we going to have those, that tape, that Zoom call released? This is really important. I want to thank Mr. Jett for putting that letter out through the town. Thank you, sir. Took a lot of courage. You agree a little bit of what I'm talking about because of free speech in the U.S. Constitution. I never said, never said anything about race or any type of thing like that. It was never a race issue. It's always an ideological issue. I'm against the Marxists. If they're teaching Marxism in the school, that's got to stop. That destroys children. I want to thank you for listening to me, and I'm going to be back again. I want you to pledge to me sometime, and I asked each one of you, are you a patriot or a Marxist? 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 Ma'am, I'm looking at you. Are you a patriot or a Marxist? Ma'am, are you a patriot or a Marxist? That's all I'm looking for. This is the greatest country in the world, and I want to go forward, not backwards, not south. And I'm not going back. I listened to last, in closing, I listened to Miguel Codera today, secretary, talking about attaching COVID money for this equity thing. Can anybody define the equity issue? Please. There's a new lexicon out there, and a lot of people don't understand it. I'm always trying to learn, so if we have a lexicon of new words, let's hear it. Don't be afraid. I'm not a racist, I've never been a racist, and shame on people who are calling me racist at school. Shame on them. I stood there like a citizen of the United States with my constitutional right expressly, and some nitwit driving by, drive-by, calling me a racist? They don't even know who the hell I am. Shame on them. I won't put their video out either. I have who they are. I would not do that. I would not put children in my video. Only idiots would do that. Let's get serious, folks. You've got a lot of great education here. Harvard, Yale, the Wharton School, Tufts, William &amp; Mary, Columbia. You're a dean of a school, ma'am. Correct, doctor? Who's the dean of Mass Maritime?
Mr. Burke, you think that we don't address the Citizen Speak? I'm so sorry.
Fine.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I want to be part of this, okay? And I expect all the parents to be part of it, too. They're bullied in this town. They're all bullied. I can't believe this. How afraid they are to come out and talk to you. I look at Mr. Jett and know what I think of? A person that's made it on his own thing, not what he looks like. Ma'am, I'm looking at you right now. You made it because you, you worked hard. Ma'am, the same thing. They didn't appoint you. You ran for office and you won. You won, you won, you won, you won, you won, you won, and you won. Fantastic. That's America. This is good, to sit here and be able to speak to you. And I don't want to raise my voice. It's really not my style, okay? I went to these schools, I love this town, and I don't want people to say, I got to leave my town because I'm being bullied. That's nonsense. That isn't America. That's some Third World dictator, Pol Pot, Hitler, Stalin, Nazis. This has got to stop. I expect you people, I expect you people to stand up and let's go. Put the point of view out and let's move forward. This is not personal. This should not be held by government money. If you do this, we'll give you some more money. I couldn't believe the Secretary of Education talking like that today.
So, Mr. Burke, can you wrap up your comments, sir?
I'm going to wrap up right now.
Thank you so much.
I can't, I, I want to thank you so much, I really do. It was Flag Day on Monday. I want to give you an American flag. It's the greatest country on earth.
Thank you so much.
If there's a better one, let me know, show me. This is the greatest country of all time. We have our moments, thank you, sir. We have our moments. We can get past this.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
There are some smart people here that want it to help. You can't bully them anymore. No more bullying. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You have a wonderful day. God bless, God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. All right. Is there anyone else here for Citizen Speak? I don't see anyone in the front. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. All right, so we can have acknowledgements next. I forgot to say, if it's all right with you, Mr. Jett, that we can take off our masks while we're speaking? Okay, good. Thank you, sir. All right, so I just want to start off by saying that we had a fabulous retirement ceremony out in the outdoor classroom or the courtyard. I want to thank the retirees who were able to make it. It was a beautiful evening. Mr. Jett shared some thoughts and feelings from their colleagues, coworkers, and longtime friends, and I want to wish all of them luck in their, in their future endeavors. I'm sure Mr. Jett might address that in the superintendent's report, I don't know, but I just thought I would mention it because it was so lovely. And now, we would like to thank someone as a school committee, Mr. Mike Lynch, if he would be so kind as to come to the table. We would like to thank Mr. Mike Lynch for his work all these years on Milton Access TV, and particularly the work he's done for us. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ada Rose Marin. She has some comments for this evening.
Thank you. So Mike Lynch is the Executive Director of Milton Access TV, where he's designed and supervised the renovation and construction of our TV studio that's located at Pierce Middle School. He's been Executive Director of Milton Access TV since 2012. He's responsible for the studio's administrative operations, budgets, employee and volunteer management, filming and programming, and he reports to a nine-member executive board on which the school committee is represented by me the last few years. Milton Access TV's schedule reflects wide experience in, his wide experience in directing, filming, programming, and generating ideas, public and candidate forums, town elections, local meetings, features and educational series, and cooking shows, authors programs, talk shows, film critics, children's shows, and more. And I was lucky enough to get help from Mike Lynch filming the, sorry, you're going to kindergarten video back in 2012, which is a long time ago, but Mike was really just wonderful, being down on the floor with his cameras, filming kindergarteners and helping us with editing and putting the video together. In 2002, Mike received the Community Builder Award in Milton for his work with best buddies in his interaction and activities for children with special needs. And I just so happened to be honored to receive the same award in that same year. And I was so impressed with Mike, who was still in high school at the time when he received that award. I think he was the first high school student to receive the Community Builder Award. So he's, he's had these skills of building community for a long time. Mike grew up here in Milton, and at the age of 15, he began as a volunteer at Milton Access TV, working on the show Milton Speaks. He's a graduate of Milton High School in 2003, went on to Quinnipiac University, graduating in 2007 with a BA in mass communications. Mike has been the go-to person for the entire town during the pandemic. He recorded and made available remote public meetings on Zoom, and many, many of them, and oversaw the technical end of two remote town meetings this year, which, again, enormous kudos to you. Mike is the grandson of the late, great Bernie Lynch, who also committed many years as a volunteer in Milton, including on the board in Milton Access TV. And Mike follows in some wonderful footsteps. Mike leaves big shoes to fill in his role as Executive Director of Milton Access TV, but we wish you well in all of your future endeavors. And on behalf of the school committee, we want to thank you for all you've done for the children, the families, and the public schools here in Milton.
Thank you.
We have a little gift for you. You wouldn't mind? Thank you so much.
Would anyone like to say anything? Thank you, ma'am. Feel free to say anything. Beverly, go ahead.
I want you to understand how many people in this town appreciate what you did to bring us the first many years of your career, and especially this last year. There were people who normally would not be civically engaged if it wasn't for your capacity to make our town meetings, our school committee, and the many other committees available to people. And I hope you know how much it was appreciated, and I wish you all the best.
Anyone else? Mr. Jett?
I would, I would like to add, I had the luxury of knowing Mike many years. Started out at Pierce when he worked and helped design and put together the studio, Obed, at Pierce, and then at the high school, and then the partnership with this area right here, along with the technology, and having our students have access to this as well. I think it was a great opportunity, in addition to being the conduit between the Milton Public Schools and the community, and just providing the community as a whole with information. So without question, and there are times that I've called late, last minute, and he's always, he's always, he's always come to the rescue and back. We just did that last night, five minutes before, and he says, I got you. So I do want to thank you because that's a testament to your commitment and dedication, and I wish you the best of, the best of luck in your future endeavor. And I know you're going on to work in the family business, so kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm not good at these things, but thank you. I really enjoyed working with the school department. Milton Access TV has a really special relationship with the schools. We're housed in one of your buildings, and I know that we've always been involved, I feel, as the years go on, especially this past year. Anytime the school department had an event or any one of the individual schools had an event, I usually was the first phone call to see how we could get that out to the community. So thank you for, you know, working with us and allowing us to do that. I am confident that the staff I have trained and nurtured over the past 12 years will continue on, so you shouldn't notice a missing step or anything. And I, because I love this town so much and I love Milton, and my departure from Milton Cable is a little sudden and sooner than I thought, I am going to continue on and serve on the board in a volunteer capacity. So to continue on my grandfather's legacy from Milton Cable, so I'm not going too far. Please know if you ever need anything, I'm here. But thank you, and the gift was unnecessary, but thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All right, thank you so much. All right, all right.
Chair Everhart, can I mention one thing that wasn't mentioned? And that is, I believe it was last year, although, although the years are blurring together now with the pandemic, we took the school committee meetings on the road. So we went to every single school and broadcast from there, not in our place here where everything's already set up. So Mike and his team had a huge, heavy lift to just get everything ready if we were at Collicott, Cunningham, Glover, Tucker, or Pierce. And so I want to thank him for that because I know it was a heavy lift.
I totally forgot about that. That's right. I think everyone was, yes, that was, thank you. Charlene was ready to do us in then as well. Yes, go ahead. Of course, of course.
I'd also like to thank Mike. He's been very helpful to me in my capacity on the town, as well as my changeover to the schools. But also, every bit is important. I want to thank Mike and his colleagues for their service to the parents. When we couldn't attend hockey games and basketball games and our children's events, they were there to broadcast them over YouTube or whatever vehicle. And as a parent, to be able to see my kid from my home when I couldn't see them in person, that was huge. And I'm sure there's a lot of parents out there that feel the same way. So I just wanted to also say a special thank you for that, Mike, because I do think you and your team always go above and beyond, and you're going to be very missed. And thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, that's very true. They, they've also been streaming like fifth grade days and graduation and the award ceremony. And yeah, this has been quite the year. And we were, you were definitely our partner in this journey, so. We miss you, but we know you're here, so we can find you. We can find you. All right, thank you so much. All right. Thank you, Mike. All right, Ms. Superintendent Jett, you are up next for the superintendent's report.
So thank you. Before I get into the report, I know you alluded to the celebration and acknowledgement we had prior to the school committee meeting. And I think it's, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to announce the retirees for Milton Public Schools this academic year in this setting. I won't get into all the bios. We will be sharing the bios with Milton Times and hopefully broadcast that out. But I do want to acknowledge 10 people at the Milton Public Schools that worked hard over the years and are now enjoying retirement. The first is Barbara Palkanitis, the longtime payroll officer for the Milton Public Schools. We have Jeannie Scroy, longtime nurse. She's over at the Collicott Elementary School. Allison Joyce, who is a partner in crime in the same vicinity at the Cunningham School. They share the office. That's Allison Joyce. Mary Donatipping, a longtime special education teacher at the middle school and elementary level. Mary McCarthy over at the Glover School. Joan Dow, Mary Boykin, two of our teachers who taught remote this year. As I said earlier, they taught two different grade levels, the entire curriculum for the entire year, and we commend them for their hard work, dedication, and commitment, not only to the students, but to Milton Public Schools and the families of our students. Carol Hunt, longtime food service personnel worker. She was a tremendous asset to the Pierce Middle School in a bright moment in the Students' Day as they, they walked through and they saw her every day in the cafeteria. Of course, Glenn Pavlichek, Assistant Superintendent of Business for the Milton Public Schools. And finally, Mary Gormley, former superintendent, 46 years that she contributed her life, blood, sweat, and tears to the Milton Public Schools. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all of those folks for their years of service, their leadership, their mentorship, and everything that they've done to brought the school to this point. And we hope that we could carry on that legacy in a positive way. So I just want to thank all of our retirees at this point. So thank you. At this point on the agenda, and I know a lot of people have asked for an update on the equity audit, and we were hoping that we would have an opportunity to do that this evening. We're still waiting for the final version of that report. But at this point in time, I would like to ask Somali Prok Martin, who is the Senior Equity Director of Education, to come to the, to see, and she will give us a quick update on, on the equity audit.
Is it all right if I take my mask?
Yes, it is.
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. So the, our projected timeline of the presentation for the equity audit report will be in July, July 21st. We are still working with Cambridge to finalize the report and create a presentation that is going to be easily more digestible instead of just a whole bunch of numbers, but actually makes sense of what those numbers really mean and what it looks like. So that's the update on the, you know, the report. But I would also like to publicly announce the five community members that actually made into the steering committee. We had a intense training with our selection committee that many people applied to be part of. I think my selection committee actually spent almost 16 hours together, developing relationships, being able to have discourse, looking through rubrics, and identifying characteristics and diverse components of what we want to see in the steering committee. So the five that made it to the final realm and is part of the team. The first I would like to say is I'm so proud that it's a student. Giselle DeManche is, and I hope I am pronouncing that name correctly, and I, I'm sorry if I'm not, Giselle. Eighth grade student from Pierce, part of the Mayak member, and also a MSAPC member. We have Shelley Sturdavant, community member and parent of eighth grade twins, and a member of the Pierce DEI Committee. Mac DeLassandro, Milton resident and parent of two Milton High School students. Meg Matthews, parent of two Tucker students, former Tucker Site Council and Tucker Board Member and Mark Member. And Monique DeBarros, which is a Milton resident and parent as well. So I'd just like to congratulate you all in public, saying welcome to the team. We're about to really embrace the work and dive in. That's all the report I have.
That's great.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments, questions? Feel free, go ahead.
I just want to say, I, I know most of the members of that team, interestingly, and you've got a great team there. That's, that's excellent, and thanks for putting in all that hard work and, you know, making sure that you got a, hate to say the right fit, but the right team that you were looking for for this equity audit. I do have a question for the chair. When is our meeting in July?
So we're, we're discussing that in our, when we get down to.
Okay, I just wondered if it was going to be after the 21st, yes.
Yeah.
So I just want to put it out there that I didn't personally select this group of people. What happened was I put out to the community an opportunity for people to be part of the selection committee, and all who applied to be part of the selection committee had to commit to a time commitment around professional development and being able to, you know, work together, team, and all that other stuff that we worked on. And that committee used a rubric and calibrated on the rubric to determine who the, who the steering committee members are. I had no say. I was just part of the facilitating process. So I just want to put that out there, that these five actually came up through this intense So, I just want to put that out there that these five actually came up through this intense process of being selected. So, I also would like to put a plug in. If there are any educators in Milton listening, please apply. We are doing Phase 2 of the steering committee application process. The application was sent with Mr. Jett's information separately. If you also can't find that email, please feel free to contact me. We are looking for educators in Milton to be part of the team. We can't do this work without that crew. So, we got to do that together.
What kind of time commitment will it require?
From members?
Yeah.
So, we're looking at a two-year time commitment because can't do work around equity or work that requires diversity perspectives and inputs and, you know, listening to all voices and respecting people's rights and opinions without building a community where you can have that type of conversation and that type of pushback and that type of, you know, thinking in a way where it's, no one's bullied or no one is afraid to say what it is that they believe in and how they think things should go. So, that requires relationship building. So, that's the reason why we're looking at a two-year timeframe for that commitment. Hopefully, we can scaffold new members in and still have old members so that can continue to transfer with some mentoring. But, we are going to be doing a lot of professional development. The thing about equity is, you can't bring people to the table without equipping them to do the work that you're expecting them to do at the table. Can't assume people are coming with skill sets. We have to identify what skill sets each person needs in order for them to work together in a way to move that work. So, the process itself is a process that we need to consider when we're talking about equity and not just the result. And that's the reason why that two-year is so important. And there would be a two-day retreat that is going to be required in the summer because it's about, again, building relationships and knowledge base and learning how to data dive using protocols. So, it's not subjective, it's objective. There's all of these training pieces that have to come to play. So, when we have students at the table, we have to equip the students to be able to be at the table with fidelity. If we have a mom who has never stepped into any type of work in this manner, we have to equip that mom to be able to be at the table to provide us with the feedback that we need to in order for us to move this work in an equitable manner. So, yes, there is a time commitment. So, we're looking at a two-day retreat. The first three months will be two two-hour workshops each month. And that's in addition to like our actual meetings to go over things, but the workshops to build the skills. And then we're going to continue with two-hour workshops every month. And the first year will be focusing on building skill sets, getting everyone able to be at the table the way they need to be at the table and building relationships, and then also data diving and identifying what the needs are and how that fits into the district and the, and the, what's the word I'm looking for? So, we have the equity review, and then we have the, why did I just go blank?
You mean the plan, the strategic plan?
The strategic, yeah, thank you. The strategic plan, yes. And culminating those two pieces together and making sure that it's being aligned and that all students are being served. I know there's a huge question on equity and how some people are using equity synonymous with race, and that's not it at all. If you are reading any of my newsletters, the last week's newsletter actually has a little bit about equity and some educational videos on what equity is. So, feel free to plug into that. It's on the website to ask. And I'm always open to having a conversation because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there or misunderstanding or whatever the case may be.
Yes, Lizzy, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Somali, for this update. And I'm really excited to see the work of the steering committee going forward and also glad to hear that educators will still have the opportunity to participate. I just have one sort of question or comment. I know that it was wonderful, the number of community members who applied to be on the steering committee, including a lot of parents with, you know, very important lived experience and also professional experience and expertise in leading change for equity in other settings. And I understand for the various reasons you just laid out, not everybody who applied is able to be included. But, I'm just wondering, what are the plans to sort of give perhaps other opportunities for these people who have clearly indicated their commitment and their interest in being part of this conversation and our continued work on this area? How, like, what other opportunities will there be for them to stay engaged, to be invited, to participate perhaps in other ways even if they were not, you know, among these, the small number included in the steering committee?
Great question. Okay, so, I will answer that this way. So, I, yes, I am the Senior Director of Equity, but I cannot do this work by myself. I'm always tapping into other resources, other groups, other members, other expertise to say, hey, I need help with this. That's going to happen again when, when, yes, we have the steering committee, but the steering committee is going to tap into other groups to do the work. There will be plenty of opportunities to engage in this work that is, it's, you know, critical to making sure that all learners, staff, and students are, you know, equipped with what they need to do to be successful and to have those types of opportunities. And that looks differently, and the stages and the phases of this work is going to look differently. And that is all going to be the responsibility of the steering committee of critically thinking about how do we involve stakeholders in this process and continue to involve stakeholders in an authentic way. I want to emphasize authentic. Again, we can bring whoever we want to bring to the table, but if we're not doing our due diligence to equip them to be at the table with fidelity, then it's not authentic. So, we have to strategically think about what that looks like. So, plenty of opportunity will always be there, so.
And if I could just add one piece. Somali and I had a conversation about the potential rollout, and we're trying to just wait until we're absolutely certain when Cambridge Education will finish that. But in terms of community conversations, you know, people might not have to make that 10-hour, 12-hour, two-year commitment, whatever the case may be. But these are going to be ongoing conversations that we're going to have with the community. And to Somali's point, and she's reminded us all over and over again, we're going to, this is going to be a fluid situation and it's going to be an ongoing situation. And people have entryways into the process over the course of time throughout the year, whether it's your DEI groups, whether it's your PTO groups, your MFE group, you know, whatever the case may be. And then just parent information sessions. We're talking about the possibility of having some, you know, whether it's the back-to-school night, which is the most heavily kickoff night of the year. And obviously, that time's limited, but how can you put pieces and bits out there where people understand? The one thing I will say is, when information comes out, we talked about different venues to get the information out and making it user-friendly or community-friendly. What I'm asking people not to do is to take information from Facebook that's put on Facebook. It may not always have the proper context. If you have a question, reach out to Milton Public Schools, to Somali, so we don't run into a situation where it is misleading or people are misinterpreting what's being presented.
Yeah, and I would definitely like to add on, you know, the statement that was made earlier by Ron or Rob? Oh, Rob, I'm sorry, Rob. About, you know, the bullying component. And, you know, we're all human beings trying to do this work, trying to be the best that we can be and do better and be better always. And the conversation should come in a very, in a way where it's not one side being bullied to the other side. It's about working together to understand the differences and where we all are coming from. And then using that information to ensure that all students are going to be served and provided opportunities to be successful, and all learners, even staff too. So, my ask is, let's approach the conversation, but let's approach it in a way where it's respectable on both ends and not about bullying one another. And I just want to state for myself, being an immigrant coming to this country, speaking English as a second language, I love America. And I know, I don't know what the narrative is about me out there, but I will say, I love America. I love what America has done for me and my family. I can't even talk about it without getting teary-eyed. And I, I love myself as much too. But that doesn't mean that there are things about me that I don't think about improving every day. So, thinking about improving bits and pieces of me doesn't negate the fact that I don't love myself. So, I love America. I just think there are parts of America that we just need to do better and be better. And that's why I do the work. So, I just want to set the record clear.
And I personally, for my own self, want to thank you for stepping into this role during this time that was so difficult. And you stepped into this role with so much grace and so much kindness. You listen to everyone, you respect every opinion, you work with people no matter how they feel, no matter what's being said in the community. And I know that you have the children at the center and the community at the center. And I am your ally in this work. And we will make things better for all students in this community. We will honor and respect the traditions of every member of our community. And we will work to help everyone understand what we mean by the words we use and the lingo that we use so that everyone feels a part of the conversation. So, just myself personally, and perhaps may I speak on behalf of the whole school committee and the administration when I say that, you stepped into a role that was very difficult at a time when we didn't do such a great job of helping that. And we are all working to keep children at the center, to move this, to keep this town its honor and tradition, but to make things better for everybody. So, I can't thank you enough for the hard work that you're doing, and I look forward to the work that we're all going to do together as a community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And lastly, I just want to say, we all want to move forward. We just want to make sure everyone is moving forward, not just some.
Exactly, right. Thank you, Director Crack Martins. We look forward to the work to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're locked out. Keys. All right, thank you, Director Crack Martins. All right, all right, Mr. Jett, you're on again, sorry.
Next on the agenda is the enrollment. We talked a little bit about this. And although I'm going to present some numbers, I'll throw a little caveat in there today because we were just doing another round of registrations. And just today alone, we added in 30 more students to our count. As of last week, and I will continue to update these numbers as we go, last week, last Friday, we were at 4,390 students. Today alone was 30 students added to that, but we had a couple of folks sprinkle in on Monday and Tuesday for next academic year. The Collycott, at the time of the tallies for next year, were going to be 594. Cunningham was 614, that includes the pre-K program. Glover's 594, Tucker 447 with pre-K. Pierce Middle Schools, 990, and then Milton High Schools, 1,151. When you start to look at the lower grades, next year, as of, as of, yeah, Monday, excuse me, today's Wednesday, and we still had to place a few more students, we're up to about 350 kindergarten students coming into the Milton Public Schools. It is a challenge, and we had a close to about 48 students out of that 4,390 that exited the Milton Public Schools that are coming back to the Milton Public Schools. They took a one-year hiatus, which we all knew about and we anticipated their folks would be coming in. But I do want to, thank you, I do want to make a public acknowledgement because we've talked about this throughout the last eight months. August is one of our biggest months for new students moving in. And so, I just share that with the general public because that may be a strain on us, but that's a number that's unknown at this time. So, I do put that out there publicly. We're at June 16th, and those are our numbers. So, we're currently close to about 4,420-something students as of today.
Okay.
And last week, that was, so that's about a 60, 61, 63 student increase from last year's enrollment as of today. And it doesn't account for any move-ins between tomorrow and the start of the new school year.
Anyone have any questions about the enrollment? I will say that, you know, many districts are actually seeing a decline in enrollment. I just find it interesting. Of course, we have a wonderful school system, so people, of course, would be coming back and moving into town. But, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I think some, some other entities in town were predicting that, you know, our numbers went down a little bit in the pandemic because people, some people took their, their students out and sent them to private schools. But this proves that our numbers are incredibly high and going to climb. So, yeah, and we're going to, we're going to, once again, run over the number of kindergarten classes that the schools were built for. We have every year for many years. So, that just increases the problem again and again, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's nothing no one, anyone here doesn't know, but.
So, to speak to that point, I'm sorry, remember Ross Denny. To speak to that point, the vast majority of students that left that came back were at the kindergarten level. And it wasn't because of the dislike for the Milton Public Schools. In my eyes, it was because it was a convenience. They had the financial means to put them in a private placement. But 23 students, the largest out of all of the grades, 23 students returning for Grade 1 with 10 new students coming into Grade 1. So, you're talking about just right there, Grade 1 alone, there's 33 students, and then our kindergarten, kindergarten grades, I mean, numbers are up as well. I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Earlier this year, we talked about the plan to use the extra space that was identified at each one of the elementary schools. Do you anticipate that we're going to use all of, it was like two classrooms online at the Cunningham, and then it was going to gradually increase as we went into the next school year? Are we going to use what we anticipated, or are we into what we thought we would need for 2022?
So, as of right now, I think we are good. But what I cannot anticipate is the new enrollments and what grade that they move in and what schools they move in. So, right now, we have some space at the Cunningham Collycott that we identified, that we already, and we're finalizing those orders under the capital request. So, we finalized that. We did that the same at the Pierce Middle School. We did it at the Glover School. We converted two spaces. Bob Patterson has just ordered some of the materials or put in order for some of the materials, the technology, and make sure that that happened. And the same thing for Tucker. So, as of right now, we anticipated a higher number. So, we should be good for the next year. But like I said, I just can't predict. It's a fluid situation in terms of what, what transpires in between July and August. But I, I'm hoping and praying that we're in good shape. But I will say, you know, to Chia Abahad's comment, there's something about the Milton Public Schools and the community that is attracting a lot of people.
So, the numbers at Pierce are, sorry, if you wanted to say something, that's a lot. Wow, like, 990, I don't...
Isn't that what they have now?
Yeah. Know what it has now?
It's about what they have now. And I, and I think what happens, if you look at it, it's only like 161 student difference between the high schools.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
You have four grades at the high school and three at the middle school. So, it is a challenge.
Thank you. Go ahead, Aida, sorry, I didn't see, I apologize.
I was just going to say, this conversation will continue into our school building committee report because we've looked closely at the enrollment projections and the ins and outs of enrollment and how that affects our application to the School Building Authority. And Sean O'Rourke, Chair of the School Building Committee, put together a graphic that I think really tells the story well so that people understand exactly what situation we're in right now and what the enrollment projections tell us and don't tell us what the factors are.
All right, all right, we'll look forward to that report after. Okay, and then I think we have one more item, agenda item, dual enrollment.
It was a dual enrollment. If folks recall, two school committee meetings ago, Milton High School Principal Karen Cahill did a presentation regarding a dual enrollment opportunity we had or were working on with Quincy College and Curry College. There were a lot of questions that were raised at the last meeting prior to any vote being taken. And unfortunately, some of those questions are still remaining, particularly with Curry College, and we understand it. It is a challenge, it's a busy time of year for folks. I, I, do you guys have the responses in your packet? If not, I will go over some of them.
I have, I have them here on my...
Okay, so, I do a... Okay, so I do apologize. One of the question was, the MOU states that the cost, this is for Curry College, is three hundred and seventy-five dollars per credit hour in the class, is three credit hours. Is that a clerical error? Unfortunately, Principal Cahill was still trying to get the confirmation on that with the, for that specific question, and has not gotten it as of earlier today. The question, a second question for the Curry College, MOU was, will participation in this course count towards the minimum ELA requirements to graduation? Or is it considered elective? It will count towards the senior English class requirement at Milton High School, that was one answer. The agreement says qualified participants will have earned senior year twelfth grade status with the B average, three-point-oh cumulative grade point average. What does this mean? Basically, in order to participate, the senior at Milton High School must have a B average at Milton High School to kind of participate in that program. So there's still some unknowns about the Curry College, which we understand that that might make it a little more challenging to do the vote. But as far as Quincy College is concerned, will the courses be delivered by Milton Public School faculty and staff at the high school with the knowledge and the content expertise? The answer to that is yes. Under Quincy College, if yes, is a portion of the tuition coming back to the Milton Public Schools? The courses are taught by Milton Public School faculty, but there's no tuition coming back to Milton Public Schools. But the teachers afforded the opportunity, add the title of adjunct teacher to their resume, as they will be teaching a course for Quincy College. So unfortunately, we're not getting money back, but it is an opportunity for our teachers, and I know that's kind of a tough sell, but it is an opportunity for our teachers and our students to gain that. So at this point in time, unless there's other questions, whether you wanted to vote to allow, well, I don't want to make a motion to that. But you could think about an initial thing, with still time to answer and work those details out, or we could continue to explore those opportunities.
I just had one follow-up question related to if a student, I, I have a feeling that, in fact, Curry College is gonna be the three times three seventy-five.
Yeah.
It is what it is. For kids who can't afford it, do we talk about whether or not there's some sort of funds that can be raised to help subsidize it? Because my concern is, that is literally going to be a restrictive opportunity if you can't afford a thousand-dollar class. While it's cheaper than a four-year university, it's a sizable ask for a family.
So that's a very good question. I will say, yes, do I have the specifics on that right now? No, I think that the general public should understand the generosity of the COVID Foundation. It provides us money every year to provide the PSATs to all students in school. We also do a support system and, and, and provide financial support for our students that may need it in terms of advanced placement courses. We have always tried to find ways to do that, and I'm proud to say, this past year, even during the pandemic, we had over three hundred and sixty high school students take over eight hundred and something AP exams. So I know there's a lot of conversations about lowering expectations, but the reverse is happening in the Milton Public Schools. When students matriculate through the grades, they do have the open, they do have the option to take these more rigorous courses. And the final thing I would say about that, those AP courses are open enrollment. Any student can take them, as long as they commit to the contract, do the work over the summer, and sustain, try to scaffold support for those who need it. Yes?
I would like to table this until we get answers to some of the questions, like the, the question that Beverly raised, as well as, well, my own particular opinion about this situation with Quincy is that if our teachers are doing the teaching and we're just sending money to Quincy and providing them with a, with a cohort of students, our students are getting something out of it, yes, but, but it seems ridiculous to me that, that that's the situation, and there's no funds coming back to the Milton Public Schools. However, I would like questions answered before, before I personally vote on this. If we decide to vote, I'll abstain.
Lizzie, go ahead.
Just a question on that. Is there any sort of negative consequence to delaying the vote? Does it compromise our ability to move forward with these opportunities, sort of during the summer, if we were to delay voting on it?
And I, I would, at this point in time, I would agree with Dr. Craighead, because I, I can't answer that. And I, and most of our students have already selected their courses as part of their courses studies, so I can't imagine it would. But I can't say that with confidence that it will or it won't. For this academic year. It could be for the second semester or second part of the year, as part of something, but I can't answer that.
So I think when Ms. Cahill had sent the answers to the questions, she did mention, she, she said, would we consider separating the two and vote, vote for perhaps just the Quincy College one, since the, it's clear where the answers are there. The, the Curry College one, the answers are not clear. But I, I hear what you're saying, Elaine, that you have concerns about the fact that teachers are paying, I mean, excuse me, teachers are teaching the course, but, but there's no fun, there's no funds coming back either to the teacher or to the district, I'm trying to.
The students are paying the money to Quincy College so that they will have a college credit on their transcript, which is great for the students, but it's also great for Quincy College, because they're not providing anything except for the credit on the transcript.
Right, right, so I think, I mean, I want to thank, as we did last time, I know you all agree with me, thank Ms. Cahill for her innovation in trying to move something like this forward. I think probably there's a lot of stumbling as we try to figure something like this out. I'm not sure what something like this would look like, you know, what we would agree to that would be beneficial to both students and to the district. So I think the only barrier, Lizzie, would be that if we don't, if not voting on it, it won't be in the program of studies, and the option to, and you would call later in the year, perhaps like in January. So I think if we have questions, and they're, and they're reasonable questions, I, all the questions that were raised the last time are reasonable. I just don't know, I think we, we would either have to, be a, someone would have to probably be a part of that conversation with Ms. Cahill and the school, and I know, look to other districts who do this, and what are, what are the, what are the benefits back and forth for each party involved?
I can share just as a personal example.
Go ahead, Beverly, yeah.
And I don't anticipate that would happen in Milton, I'll start with that. I grew up in upstate New York, with the University of Rochester and Rochester Institute of Technology had land that was owned by our town. And the relationship was, if you had a B, you could take those classes for free. I don't know if there was a pilot, this is upstate New York, mind you, but there was, there was this level of reciprocity. And I don't want to delay the opportunity for students to have graduate, college credit. But I agree with Elaine, like, I would love to have had this hammered out, because if it was, I would happily approve it. One of the town meeting members a couple of years ago asked me to find out what contract they used. And I was, in all fairness, I called my town, they were, they, they were not as willing to share those materials. But I do think there is an opportunity for negotiation, I just feel bad about the delay for students. But I would rather have something firm that we felt comfortable with before rushing in. Because maybe it's not a matter of there's a cash dispersment coming back to Milton Public Schools, but maybe it's free PD for our teachers, or there's some sort of negotiation. You're, you're getting a cohort that you didn't have to earn, you didn't have to recruit.
Right.
Milton Public Schools are giving it to you, and, and in response to that, you'll get free meeting space. Or you can get, there's something that Quincy College may be willing to do that's not onerous, because they're, you know, they're a small school, but something that shows, we appreciate that Milton wants to partner with us, and that you're gonna give us a cohort of kids, and in return for that, your kids are gonna get college credit, and we're gonna do this for the Milton Public Schools.
Or to address your other question, sub, perhaps subsidize, you know, a certain number of students who can't afford to take the class in return for what we're, what we're providing for Quincy here. And I do want to go on record, I mean, I, I advise students on the college level. I, I have been a faculty member on the college level, looking at transcripts for many, many years now. These are great programs. I am not trying to hold this up, I, I'm not trying to like, put a stone wall up or anything like that. I just, I just want it to be an equitable situation.
No, I, yeah, I think that those are very fair and valid questions.
Those are valid questions. The other thing, we, we had a tentative conversation last year, then lost, well, two years ago, and lost traction. And even if it was something that helped us with space, we're allowing our students to leave as a perk for seniors to help with the enrollment, but they take the class at a college university and get that college experience at least for one, one class. But we could definitely get these answers to you, and.
And maybe one of us should reach out to Ms. Cahill, like, as the, as the body responsible for accepting the contract, or we should, maybe one of us can reach out to her and say, have, give her our suggestions or ideas, and then work with her to make it.
I wrote them down in, in, now that the year's coming to a close, maybe we have a little time.
You might have some time to do some work.
To do it with fidelity.
Yeah, no, and I, and like I said, I think we're all in agreement that this is the, this is where we want to go for students, right? And this was, even when we were doing the surveys looking for the superintendent, this was something parents were interested in, sort of thinking about for our town. So I, I thank you to Ms. Cahill and her team, and we look forward to having an agreement that we all feel comfortable with. So thank you, all of you, for your, for your thoughts and suggestions. I'm so impressed with everyone's thought process. All right, so onto the chair report, so that would be me. In your packet, there are some Milton School Committee Subcommittee suggestions from what we talked about the last time. You know, I look, you can look them over, I think Lizzie already pointed out that it was Beverly who wanted to be on the consolidated joint town, joint town school subcommittees, is that right, Beverly? Was that you that wanted to be on that, not Lizzie, right?
That's right, and, and the Inclusion Task Force.
I'm sorry, say that again?
That is correct, as well as the Inclusion Task Force.
Thank you, I couldn't, thank you, that was the one piece that I had not written down, I had a question mark there, so thank you for helping me remember. You'll notice that Beverly had suggested two new advisory committees for the school committee to consider. And I had a conversation with Beverly and Mr., and I had a separate conversation with Mr. Jett and Ada. And so what we've decided is, at our retreat, we would like to discuss those two committees further, sorry, further, because there are two, there are two task forces that are attached to the strategic plan that address both data and one of them, and the other is curriculum. And so we try, we, as we think about what things are going to look like in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two and beyond, what the plan's gonna look like, do we, what do we want to do about that? How do we want to take the work that people are already doing as part of the strategic plan? Do, do we want to separate that? What do we want to do as a committee, along with the leadership of the superintendents, to really firm that out? In addition to incorporating the quality review information that we're going to get from Director Craig Martin. So I think I would like to put those two committees on the side until we get to our retreat and discuss them as a conjunction with part of, separate from the strategic plan. And so if that's agreeable, I appreciate, I've been doing some research too about other towns that have curriculum and instruction committees and, and trying to get some more information about that, that I can, we can bring to the retreat as well. And to think about, because there are some things we really want to think about. There's a lot on the table right now in terms of what's being reviewed, the math curriculum, they want to do a review of, the history, like, those are in the cycle that we have as due curriculum reviews, just because you might want to get new curriculum, right? So a lot of things to think about. But those two aside, these were the things that we discussed at our last school committee meeting, except for the changes, thank you to those of you who suggested them. Yes, Dr. Craig?
I'm willing to chair the policy Subcommittee unless somebody else wants to do it.
Right, so I was talking to Lizzie, Dr. Carroll, and she was also saying she would, even though it's her first year. I think, I think that would be wonderful. Oh, oh, okay, okay, I think it's great. Policy is my favorite Subcommittee, as anyone who, and not that I don't love finance. I love finance. Love, love finance, but I love policy, because it really helps to move the district and to really set guidelines for everyone. So if, 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 if Lizzie would like to chair, and we would be supporting you always, of course, in that, in that capacity. And Dr. Craighead will chair Finance, Dr. Carroll would chair Policy, Member White would chair Health and Wellness. And then, we're not doing transportation and traffic right now. Facilities would be Members Rosemarin and White, and Member Rosemarin would chair that. Strategic Planning Committee right now is currently Member Rosemarin, and we'll just leave it at that for now. School Building Project Committee is Member Rosemarin and Members White. And Member Rosemarin serves as a co-chair of that committee with a community member. Dr. Carroll is going to be the liaison to our Student Advisory Committee, and that's going to be a really rich experience, I think, because there's lots of opportunities in town happening around that. And then Doctors Craighead and Doctors Carroll agree to be part of the bargaining team for our union negotiations. Beverly Ross Denny would like to do Town School Consolidation Committee. And Dr. Elaine Craighead and Member White would do Town Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Can I pause you there?
Yep.
I think we only get one rep, so Benny wanted to do it, so.
But you were, you've been doing it, though, and you want to continue, right?
I did want to.
Okay, so you're going to continue then, that's fine, she can do it next year.
Oh, she does have next year.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly. All right, we don't have anyone for the Mountain, I'm sorry, that's just me, I'm done, you know me with my pen. Milton Foundation for Education, we need to discuss that. Member Rosemarin will be staying on for MPEG. And then Security, we, we put a table on that for now. And then Inclusion Task Force, Beverly Ross Denny, right?
Yeah, and I'd also like to serve on the MFE.
Oh, you would?
Oh, my goodness.
I love the MFE, also served on that board for many years. And then Payroll Warrant, Dr. Craighead has been signing both the Payroll Warrant and the Venda Warrant. Do you still wish to do that, Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Okay, we appreciate that tremendously. And then, of course, the Appointed Representatives of the Five-Year Financial Plan Committee, would that be Superintendent Dexter? It used to be Dr. Pavelcheck.
Yeah, it would be.
Okay.
Yeah, while she's out of the room.
While she's out of the room.
That's right, yeah, she's not there, so she's.
Okay, and then Mr., Superintendent Jett, you would be the Special Education Collaborative attending those meetings? Okay, all right, so that's what it currently stands at. I don't, I don't think we have to vote on them. I think we just print them and make them available to the community. And then after our retreat, we will figure out what we want to do about the other two committees. All right, and I would like to help on Policy, I know there's a lot of people on Policy, but we can, I can, I can figure it out. We can figure it out. All right, thank you all, I'm looking forward to a really productive year. I think we have wonderful committees and members.
You're elected, Amy.
Amy, you have been elected.
We signed you up for everything.
Five-Year Financial Plan Committee Representative. Okay, so that's, that's the Subcommittee list, I will meeten it up and get it off to Charlene for a final approval for now. This will, to be, be continued. Then the last thing on here that I'll talk about is the retreat, and the school committee meeting. So apparently I was wrong, shocking, that we usually don't meet in July, we usually just meet in August. Like the, the Wednesday before the school opens. So when we had our meeting the last time, we said we were gonna have a meeting on July twenty-first.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because we wanted the time to plan, so we wouldn't go into the beginning of the school year having no idea.
Can we still use the twenty-first as a planning, but according to Director Craig Martins, though, what about the information from the quality review?
We would have it by then, right?
We, we, we should definitely have it by then, they should have it earlier. And the reason why we chose the twenty-first, because we, I thought we were doing the school committee meeting on the twenty-first.
That's my fault, right.
So that's why.
That's what I didn't do.
Yeah.
The connection.
But could we use the twenty-first then for part of our retreat? I know that Dr. Carroll has commitments earlier in the day, as do I, I'll be teaching from eight to one every day, not teaching, yeah.
I'll be working, but I can take off early.
Yeah, and we can come for a later part of the day, okay.
The afternoon and maybe.
Or, yeah, I mean, Doctor, Lizzie's late, busy until like four-ish.
I, I couldn't get here before five-thirty.
Right, the other thing, oh, here she comes, Member White. The other thing is, we can do some of it remote, since that was passed by, it would be open to the public, people could come, just like they would on the Zoom. But we could also do some of it remote, because that was approved today, right? And that might make things easier?
Congratulations.
Am I, no, yes, maybe?
It's just, it's usually easier when we can sit in a room and hammer things out.
Okay, that's fine, so can we stick with the twenty-first, so then, for at least part of that time, in the later part of the day, have our retreat? Okay. Okay. Is that, is that agreeable to everyone, the 21st?
Yep, to time up of the retreat.
And if it's at five, if it starts at 5:30, that's great. I don't have to take any time off.
Perfect. All right, we'll do it later on. We're probably going to have to add another day, half a day, because I do think we have a lot to think about.
Yes.
And, but if we, at least we get started on the 21st, that would be helpful. And I, Director Prack Martin's had some suggestions about helping someone who could help facilitate the process. Or, and if any of you have any suggestions, that would be great.
If anything, I wanted to know, besides us, the six elected members, will Superintendent Jett, Assistant Superintendent Dexter, and all the others?
Of course, anytime we meet, it's an open meeting, so everybody, yeah. People have come in the past. All right, so that's wonderful. And then I will talk to Charlene about what the actual date is in August for that meeting. I don't, I'm sorry to say that I get two public school systems, the dates that schools are starting confused, but I will ask her. All right, thank you so much. I'm done talking now. Yes.
Chair, I know that you wiped out my Finance report because there's no vendor warrant tonight, but I did want to just say something that'll take one minute about finance. Is that all right?
One minute, go ahead.
All right. I just want to let everyone know that the School Committee is working with the Select Board. Specifically, the two Finance Committees are working together. The town has graciously offered some of their CARES Act funding that has to be spent by June 30th to the schools. And Karen Praval, who is the Director of Finance for the town, and Assistant Superintendent of Business Amy Dexter have been working together to figure out what of the schools' expenses related to the pandemic could be funded out of that money from the town. So it's in process. That's it.
Can I just make one correction? The CARES Act money has to be spent by December 31st, but we're trying to close out some things by June 30th.
Right.
But same.
I did the same thing.
Thank you.
You're not alone.
Fiscal year. All right, so the School Building Committee report is up.
I'd like to invite Sean O'Rourke up to the table. And Amy, do you have this loaded up on here?
What, what doc, she gave me three documents.
The PowerPoint. Well, it, it.
Yes. You tell me if this is the right one. Hold on.
Yep, that's it.
Yep. And then I just have to.
Great.
Slide show.
While, while Amy's getting that warmed up, I'd like to just welcome Sean O'Rourke here, joining us this evening. It's the first time he's come to meet with the School Committee.
Welcome.
And the first time James Jett's gotten to actually see you in person and realize how tall you are. But Sean's, Sean's been wonderful to step up into the role as Chair of the School, School Building Committee after our former Chair, Carrie Hurley, needed to step down. And I've worked closely, and we've all worked closely with Sean under his leadership for this past year, and it's been a great year. And I thought I'd give Sean a little more chance to introduce himself and let you get to know him a little bit.
Thanks, Ada. Yeah, so my name's Sean O'Rourke. I've been living in the town now for about three years. I grew up in Duachester, right next door, so I'm very familiar with the town. I'm the Director of Electrical Engineering for a company called WSP here in Boston. We've got offices worldwide. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Construction Managers Association of New England. So I've been on that now for essentially a year. For, for myself, I was trying to bring, you know, my background in engineering and construction to help the School Building Committee. With my company, I've been there 17 years. I've worked on a variety of projects from Puerto Rico for Trenorano, which was the first urban transit system down there, all the way to San Diego for Rental Car Center, up to the Bay Bridge in San Francisco, all the way back over to New York. Recently, just completed LaGuardia Airport, and we're recently, before the pandemic, working at JFK. Around the city, I've done a lot of work with Massport, and currently working with the MBTA on a lot of projects. So it's been nice, but nothing compared to raising a four-year-old daughter, and, you know, that's my heart's brad right now. So, and that, that kind of how I got involved in the schools a little bit. I went to the information session for my daughter for pre-K. She's at the Cunningham. And during that presentation, at pre-K, they gave an over enrollment presentation from Dr. Donahue previously. And in that presentation was a graph, and it just kind of jumped out at me. It was the enrollment through the schools over the years and how it all jumped up. The question, I'm not one that really speaks publicly. As you can tell, I stutter a little bit as I get nervous, but it's fine. The, but it jumped out at me on the graph. As I was looking at it, after 2008, enrollment just started spiking and going up. When I, I looked at it, my question to Dr. Donahue was, you know, you just finished the schools. There was, didn't you anticipate over enrollment, more kids coming here? For lack of better words, if you build it, they will come, right? And the answer was no. And it was understood there was a simple answer, because I'm sure there's a lot of complex issues that go into it. But my, it was kind of a setup question for my follow-on, was the talk about a new school. And are you projecting, when you build a new school, again, are we going to build it correctly to accommodate that? And the answer again was no. So my end for engineering, I'm like, that doesn't make any sense. I need to get on this board. I need to jump on this. I need to volunteer. So jumped in, volunteered a couple of years ago, and as Ada can probably attest to, just dove into the numbers. I've been diving into the enrollment numbers, the projections that NESDEC does, the square footage of all the, the schools, what they're used for and how they've been converted. So any, any questions on the schools, feel free, I can answer them. So with that, you know, we, we've been pushing with MSBA. We submitted to them last year a Statement of Interest, which we hit on two factors, both for overcrowding. We put it in. The MSBA denied our application last year, which was fine. There was a lot of competition for funding that was out there, and there are other schools that are obviously in more need. Part of it too is, you know, the work that the teachers do. Our educational system hasn't suffered that much. So when they were measuring some of those metrics that they use, because kids are doing so well, they're like, well, Milton's pretty fine, but we know we're not. So with that, we're resubmitting, and part of that process of resubmitting is coming for you tonight with our revised Statement of Interest. The nice thing is, as Ada knows, and Ada, thank you for all the work you've done on this. Ada and Scott Tereshak of our committee did a ton of work originally to do it, and to kind of rehash it, to update our, our statistics for what we have now. The good thing about it was we were able to import last year's ones, so we didn't have to recreate from scratch, which helped us with our timeline, like, it's due very soon. So what Ada and I, and I think James, you might chime in a little bit too, is we wanted to kind of run you through our revised Statement of Interest and stuff like that. So Ada, do you want to start with the beginning slides, or do you want me to?
Sure, sure. And I just might add also that Betty White is also on School Building Committee, so feel free to chime in, Betty.
I will.
Yes.
So just to give you an overview of what the Statement of Interest is, we, and what we need to do. We are required by MSBA to get approval by both the Select Board and the School Committee to vote to authorize the submission of the Statement of Interest to the MSBA. So that's what we're looking for tonight, is a vote to authorize the submission. And it is the first of many steps in MSBA's school building, construction, funding pipeline. We'll tell you more about that in a bit. There are no commitments for the town at this point. It was just putting it in and then seeing, seeing where it goes. And hopefully, this time round, we'll, we'll have more luck and get in, but we aren't making any commitment. And obviously, there's no guarantee of acceptance by MSBA. It is a very competitive process. This past year, 15 Statements of Interest were accepted out of the 71 submissions. We made it through the first round, the sort of the first cut of 30 that, that were considered as sort of the first cut. And we were very pleased with that, but there's, there's more, more to do. So this is, and I'll turn it back to Sean.
Yeah. So essentially, the Statement of Interest is due in a couple of weeks, June 25th, that we'll submit it. MSBA then, you know, takes all the revised Statement of Interest and also new Statement of Interest over, over that timeframe. They gather them, review them, and there'll be a similar process to what we went through before. There's initial cut that they, they'll, they'll put a certain amount of schools out and allow a certain amount more. After that cut, they do formal interviews with them, which will allow us, you know, for some of the enrollment stuff that you were talking about, James, of, in August, when they start spiking. The good thing is we'll be, be able to have those numbers then to provide to them. We don't have them today, but they'll be in by that time. And then after that, you know, the decision should come next year as far as whether we're accepted or whether or not. And then as we get accepted, if you go to the next slide, please. Sorry about that. I'm looking at my computer. I'm saying next slide.
Want to go back?
No, it's all good.
This one or the next?
No, the next slide, please.
Okay.
Sorry about that. The, once we get accepted to it, there's basically a 270-day period where the, the MSBA, it's, it's their first set of modules that they have. So within those, we have compliance certification, a formation of a school building committee, which the good thing is, we're way ahead of them and already have one. So essentially, we just need to augment our committee to make additional members, which we've already started doing, because previously, we were assuming we'd be accepted. The educational profile, there's basically just a litany of things that go along with it as, as we go through that. And that, after that, that will basically put us into a next module, which is basically where you start bringing on an architect and engineer, and you move that process through. Next slide. There we go. So this is kind of that slide, that process that we're talking about. The eligibility period, the formation of the project team, which is the engineer, architect, and owner project, owner's project manager. From there, once we have them, we lead into a feasibility study, where we'll find land, develop different options for that land or other pieces of land that they look at, and then come up with the best option to jump into schematic design. After that, we'll get to a point where we'll have, through schematic design, a kind of better idea of what the funding should be for this. And we'll come to, back to the town with the funding authorization that we need to do. Once that funding's approved, we would go into detailed design, and then soon after that, construction and closeout. So Ada is, can you pick?
So, so our SOI is focusing on Cunningham School. It represents, it's the one school, you had to focus it on one of, of your schools. And we, we framed the SOI as representing all the elementary schools, but really, the response is framed around all four elementary schools, because they're all overcrowded. It's not just one that needs, that is overcrowded, and the rest have, have room or the like. So that, that was, Cunningham is the target school, and we've applied under two of their priorities. Priority two, which is existing severe overcrowding, and priority four, which is prevention of severe overcrowding in the future. So we use the previous submittal, as Sean was saying, as a baseline for, for this year's SOI. And we just updated it with some of more of the facilities modifications that we've been doing. We added in more information about the facilities, maintenance work that we've done, and addition, additional information about current enrollment. And then we go into existing conditions in the schools, measures that have been taken to mitigate the overcrowding problem, the impact of overcrowding on the district's educational program. And a lot of it has been talking about non-traditional spaces converted to classrooms, because that's really been our primary way of dealing with the overcrowding. And in the SOI, we talk about the difference between the number of students in the schools when we first opened all the elementary schools, after when the last ones were opened in 2007, 2008 school year, there were 1,873 students. The school's capacities were built for 1,900 students. And this year, the enrollment for, and this is for pre-K to five, is 2258 in, in 2021. So it's an increase of 385 students since 2008. However, as you'll see later on, and as we all know, those numbers actually went down some this year, because this year is an anomaly with the pandemic. And so we're, we're submitting our SOI with these numbers, but we're also making a point repeatedly that, yeah, it dropped now, but it's not going to be staying that way. And all indications are that it's going back up and with a rebound, and we're already on, on our way there. As we know, the, the schools were built for 14 strands, which is 14 classes at each grade, K to five. And currently, we are five classes short of 17 strands of K to five. So we, we have already expanded the number of classes that we have in our schools that were built for much less. And as some of you may recall, we did an elementary space needs study with DRA that was completed in early 2019. And their conclusion was that 10 years out from, from that point, that we would have a shortage of 26 classrooms. So we have already converted over 20 non-traditional spaces into classrooms, with five more projected for the next five years. And as we know, we've gotten some funding from the town, capital funding, to do those additional conversions. So pass it on to Sean.
Yeah. So as Ada was talking about, you know, DRA did this study a while back, and their study was probably 2017, 2018, because that's kind of when the presentations were being done. You know, since then, the town has formed the School Building Committee in the spring of 2019. And as Ada talked about, you know, to mitigate this overcrowding, they've been, you know, cannibalizing non-traditional educational spaces to make classrooms out of it. As some of you probably know, kindergarten classrooms take up more space than a traditional classroom. So as those kindergarten numbers are getting up and up, those are pushing out some of the other classrooms to kind of move that stuff around. And it's just the domino effect of, once you recreate one of those, it offsets a number of other classrooms all the way through. So, you know, through that, I mean, one thing too is I met with Holly Concanon a couple of weeks ago to go over some, some studies that I was doing. And we couldn't meet in her office. It was being used for testing. So, you know, your principals and stuff like that don't even have office space that they can operate out of professionally. They're just unheard of. So it's, and they're doing that to allow the students to do that. So a lot of people are sacrificing a lot of stuff right now, you know, for the betterment of them, of the students. Next slide, please. The impact on overcrowding. Yeah, the class sizes are starting to get bigger. You, you're limited by the square footage that you guys have in the spaces now. You know, people are working to convert some of the space, but you guys are essentially out of space at this point. That's going to lead to other kind of critical decisions that are going to come over the next couple of years as we go through this process. The cafeterias are one of the areas that I became aware of during the tours of, you got to push these kids in and out through there. So when people talk about expanding the, the buildings to make more space for students, there's functionality, things there, like pushing kids through a class, through a cafeteria at different times. You don't want kids starting to eat lunch at 10 o'clock and then having to go through remainder of the day for lunch. So while theoretically, yeah, you could build more classrooms, add on to buildings, put more kids in there, there are limitations to it. A lot of it too is, you know, art, music, computer labs, all those additional spaces, all those are gone. The playgrounds are all overcrowded, and again, this all comes to limited space. You're having more and more students come into a limited amount of space, and you're just, the, the square footage per student is, 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 is reduced. It's critical at this point. And knowing the timeline of this program, of this project, it's just going to get worse over the number of years going forward. Next slide, please. Perfect slide to transition to. You know, I expect an increased enrollment. You know what I mean? NESDEC's used to kind of project all these enrollment numbers. You know, they take into account a certain number of things. Mainly, the way, the, the way they explained it to us for rural communities, they take live birth rates that are there and extrapolate those out, assuming those kids transition right into school. A while back, when they were doing the schools and stuff, they were. A while back, when they were doing the schools and stuff, they weren't taking real estate transactions. And so as you start overlaying real estate transactions on top of this, as we all know, you can see all the full of sale signs in the town, empty nesters are moving out, people with kids are moving in. And as you overlay, I can pull up one of the graphs at some other future meeting. When you overlay that with the enrollment numbers, they, they're in line. So as you get spikes in real estate transactions, you have spike in early enrollment in kindergarten and first grade. The other one that's coming up, as everyone knows in town, the 40B projects, right? We're looking at them. The majority of the 40B projects, more than 50% of the units that are going to be there are going to be two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. That's going to lead to more children in the town. So it's occurring. You know what I mean? You can, you can, the problem with that 40B projects too is NesDex doesn't take those into account right now. They don't take it into account until the permit is issued and they know it's going to be constructed. However, we as a town know it's going to be constructed, you know, it's going forward. So until those permits are issued, they're not taking that stuff into account for their projections. Uh, next slide.
This was the problem. This is what I was, uh, this is what I was trying to tell Charlene.
That's, that's how it looks on the screen.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was the problem.
Did it not come through?
Yeah, yeah. It was a graph that wasn't showing up in the PowerPoint.
Can you speak to it even though we can't see it?
Yeah. Can I, uh, can I connect my computer? I think. Yeah, it shows up here. Can I connect my computer to that?
I think you can, you can connect over here because I'm, I'm...
Projecting.
You're projecting.
Yeah, but we can, um...
Yeah.
Do you want to? I think we just have to plug this in. Oh, you needed adapter. I don't have one.
Yeah, you need a different adapter.
Yeah. Could you email it to her?
Yeah, we can email it.
Yeah, I tried repeatedly and it wasn't coming through. That's why I sent the PDF.
I think they, they already emailed it. That's how you got it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is on, um, the thumb drive, I think.
Yeah, they email it to you.
Yeah, I'll just email you an image, not the PDF, so that way you can...
Do you have a PDF of it?
Well, I think you have to, to Charlene.
Well, he's got to get it on my email. Oh, okay. I forgot that one. I wanted to send my email.
Everyone close their eyes.
You can't see it anyway.
No, you can see the emails.
But that's how you, that's all you do.
You can see how many I get a day.
Trust me. Yeah, I can be able to like...
So you just sent it.
Go to your drive.
Why is this not even working? This won't even let me. Do you know why this isn't even letting me?
If you click next.
It's accurate.
Right, and I'm doing this. Am I not gonna?
Anybody have a thumb drive?
Right here.
Perfect.
Which is what I think hers is. So I don't know if it's named the same thing.
Engineer, always solving problems.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would, I would have called you Sean, but Sean had about 50 things going on this afternoon.
Sitting in. She was going awry.
Oh, but if he gives it back to me?
Oh, if he does, but he's gonna... Why he's doing this?
Do you have something for me to sign?
Yeah.
So when you sign it, look at every page because there's certain spots where you have to put your initials.
Yeah, I mean, it's asking me if I want to format it. I don't, it's asking me if I want to format this USB, which I don't want to do because I don't want to lose anything that you might have on there.
Okay, I don't know what else is on there. I was, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't read it out.
Yeah.
Essentially, well...
Yeah. Sorry, yeah.
It's fine. Essentially, what it does is, and you'll have the graphic in your handouts and...
Yeah, we can make it public, um, through it. What it does is it takes the actual enrollment that's there and it looks at it. The last time you had to dip in enrollment was 2010 to 2011. And what we did is take the NesDex projections at 2011 that showed a reduced enrollment at that point, and then overlaid the actual, and you'll see the actual skyrocket over it. So what we're doing is using that as kind of a graphic for the NesDex predictions that went on last year that are saying, they're saying it's going to be a decrease going forward to just show they're not really there. Typically, for the enrollment that the town's been doing, it's basically about 1.2% per year, 1.17 to be exact, compounded every year. So if you average it out, if you take the actual enrollment numbers and look at that, so with 2,300 kids, it works out to like 27 extra students every year. Uh, that's a classroom every year. So the timeline of this project really becomes critical because MSBA, as we join with them, it now becomes, you know, a seven to eight-year timeline before we build a new school. So you can do the math on there and just start seeing how much this is going to be, you know, a problem there. One of the things I'm pushing is, is there ways that we can work with MSBA to shorten that timeline through different contracting methods and stuff like that? So... Is that the?
Yeah, I was just passing this around.
Yeah, and what else do you? Can you just pass that around?
So the bottom is what they projected and the top is the reality?
Yeah, so the green, the green that you're seeing there is the projections from NesDex.
This is the year that, that was the last year there was a little bit of a drop. And the NesDex projections were just here, but this is what actually came.
I saw this Monday night, so I'll just pass it on.
Right, and so we had dropped here, and this is this year's NesDex projections. And we expect that it's going to continue to be...
Lovely.
So it just tells the stories.
They start on...
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it.
Not the most... Efficient way, but do the best we can. Sorry, folks. Um, so MSBA has some very specific required language for our vote on this, and it's in your packets. It's like a paragraph long, and I don't know if you want me to read this out loud.
You could summarize it.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it's basically, um, the language is here, having convened an open meeting today, that we are approving the submission of the statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority due June 25th for Cunningham School. And the priorities identified are priority two and four for existing severe overcrowding and prevention of severe overcrowding expected in the future. And it gives a little bit of a blurb about the enrollment numbers that we just described to you and hereby specifically acknowledge that submitting this doesn't guarantee acceptance or approval and that it doesn't require any funding commitment from Milton or from MSBA. So that's the motion. Somebody would...
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, discuss, anyone?
Do you have any questions?
Elaine? Um, okay, so first of all, I'd like to thank you both for putting together such a thorough presentation. And I wish that the viewers could see this graphic because it's, it's very telling as to what NesDex has predicted in the past and what ends up happening. So, and I totally agree with you that it's, it's going to go up, not down. I think some people may have looked at that slide in the presentation that showed the NesDex prediction of needing 26 classrooms in the next 10 years, and seeing that we've already re-appropriated 20 spaces and five more in the next few years, and would say, oh, well then why did you need a new school building? I thought you did a great job, Sean, of going through all of the things that we have lost by re-appropriating those spaces, everything from heightened pressure on bathrooms and cafeterias to no art rooms or music rooms or computer labs, spaces in libraries being taken away. And these are the things we're taking away from our students. So I am, uh, you know, totally supportive of this, obviously have been for years. But the other, the other thing is, even if we flatlined at the point where, super, I almost called you principal. Superintendent Jed said where our enrollment, the enrollment figures he went over earlier in this meeting, even if we were right there, we need this building. And I, I know that the numbers are going to go up. I can't, I can't, you know, guarantee that, but, but it's been historically the case, and I think it only makes sense to, to say that. But even if it didn't, we're in dire need of this building. So that's my two cents. Any?
So I just want to clarify, Sean, when you started your presentation, you talked about the questions you had when you yourself came to a meeting. But I just want to clarify for people who are listening in for the first time that 25 years ago, the last school building group did see that our enrollment was going to go up significantly, and we were not allowed to build by the rules of this organization beyond our current enrollment. So if we had, if, if at the time, the MSBA had given us the flexibility to build for what our projections were, we would not be in this scenario right now. So I think that people need to understand it wasn't like someone didn't do their duty 25 years ago. They did, but we were not allowed to build beyond what our enrollment was at the time. And, you know, I support this 100% that we should submit this. However, given, if you've been watching, if you watched the news last year during the pandemic, and there was a lot of discussion about the state of the buildings across the Commonwealth, we, there are so many buildings that are that priority one. We are priority two because of overcrowding, but priority one still is a substantial amount of buildings. And I work in a district where they were approved in Denham because one of the elementary schools is over 100 years old. So we're competing against a lot of infrastructure needs that are significant. Our overcrowding is a, is a huge problem, but you know, there's a possibility that we're going to go through this again and come up with the same response, and then we have to go to the drawing board to say, where do we go from here? And whether or not we could do some creative ways to build a building without the support of MSBA.
Yeah, yes, please.
Thank you for bringing that up because the reason, I didn't want to get into it too much, but when I talked to Dr. Donahue at that meeting, and he said no, like I said, I knew there was a lot more that going, went into it, and you know, with my education through MSBA, through this process and stuff like that, for others that might not know, MSBA comes in and does their own projections on their own. They'll take what NesDex did here as part of our SOI, but later on, they'll do their own projections. And what they say is, based on that, this actual spreadsheet that you can download, you enter in what that enrollment projection is going to be, and it lists out how much square footage they'll allow you to build. So what that does is become, for lack of a better word, your template of what you're allowed to build. Anything bigger than that is non-reimbursed based on square footage. So that's one of the tricks that comes up when we're working with MSBA. If there's additional things that we want to do as part of this new school that are outside those boundaries, we don't get reimbursed for it. So what it does is, there's an advertised reimbursement rate from MSBA that's like 30, 35%. The last time we did the school, we got a much bigger reimbursement number on there. It's not going to happen this time. So what happens is that 30, 35% gets diluted. So in reality, talking to OPMs that I know in the business and stuff like that now, that number goes down to 20 to 25%. So as people are, you know, when we talk about this new school and the process going through, people that are in the mindset of what it was in 2008 and that reimbursement rate that was there, they have to get educated very quickly. That's not going to be there. So part of that comes in, what Betty was alluding to, because it's such a small reimbursement rate over a long time period, like we're saying seven to eight years, and if we get approved in 2022, we're talking 2030 before the school gets constructed, is it worth it to wait for that small amount of a reimbursement rate? Or is it better just to go in on our own, knowing we can sacrifice? We buy time. So we forfeit that reimbursement from MSBA that we know is going to get diluted. We take the handcuffs off on the design and allow us to build what we want to build, and then we get it done quicker, and we address the problem in a much shorter timeframe.
If I could, if I could just add something, I'm going back to the slide to expand upon, remember White's comment and Sean's comment about the 43, I mean, the 40B projects? Those are not allowed to be counted yet until they're permitted.
Correct.
We know it's coming. And so to your point about taking off the handcuffs, that might give us the flexibility to move forward and make those projections. Because again, and I'm reiterating it because I know sometimes it gets lost to the general public that are not immersed in the conversations on an ongoing basis, and they think that we're not doing our due diligence, but in fact, we are, but we're just restricted. The other piece about the buildings, it's not just the space to pull them over. If we don't get it, we're talking about increased class sizes. And, and that makes the current spaces that we have a lot tighter. And I think that's the piece that, you know, you want to make sure that we keep reiterating to the general public about that. In, in some cases, it's a good problem to have. People feel very confident about the talent in Milton, the Milton Public Schools, but it is pushing us to the limit.
And just add on to that, I think to build the case, it is to talk about class size ratios. When you have 26 seven-year-olds in a room, it changes how a teacher can instruct. And while not all of us are teachers by trade, I think people can understand that 26 to one is not the ratio you have. And I remember back in, several years ago in California, they had a very similar situation. They had 30 and 40 kids in a class. And I think Milton can do better than that. And I think to your point about waiting for a 25% reimbursement, we might need to have a parallel path that says, if it doesn't come through, what are we going to do?
Yeah, so on that note, you know, that, as we submitted our SOI last fall, people on my committee can attest to it, and they've all done a great job of, I was pushing everybody for Plan Bs. You know, we weren't guaranteed it was going to happen, and if it didn't happen this fall and this spring, what was our plan? So we have kind of dove down multiple rabbit holes of alternatives that we've looked at and stuff like that. But we felt it would be best to still put in for the SOI right now. But we still have alternative plans that we've been working on that we're not ready to publicly talk about yet for stuff like that for public consumption. But the plans are there for alternatives that we're looking at.
That's good. And also, when Superintendent Jed talks about the 40B projects, uh, you know, just going back and looking at the last SOI, there were five 40B projects in the pipeline then. There are eight now. The, the total number of units for our last SOI was 635. We're now up to 771 units. And as Sean mentioned, more than half of those are two bedrooms or more. So you know, so if you say half of 771, even if they had one child in each one of those, that's another 385 kids potentially. But, you know, we also see a lot of smaller units becoming available that people who have empty nests then downsize into those, but then their bigger houses with multiple bedrooms become available. So it's a, you know, it, it, um, it kind of affects us both ways. But, so this is, this is the update. Any other questions or comments? Let's vote. I'm going to take a vote then. I think the motion is on the table. It's been seconded.
So, yeah, all in favor of the SOI motion on the table?
Okay.
I would just like to thank Sean and Ada and the entire committee for their work, their ongoing work, which has been over multiple years now and will continue to be ongoing over, over at least another year or so. And I do think having a Plan B and a plan that might actually become the Plan A... And I do think having a Plan B and a, a plan that might actually become the Plan A if the funding is not available, is really the way we should be thinking. And, you know, we had had some other ideas on the table before about an early childhood center, about expanding some other spaces. I don't know if those would continue to be conversations you have as opposed to just a new building. But I know there was lots of conversation about those things as well. And I, and I just want to say for the viewing public that, you know, there was a lot of conversation during our meetings, during the height of the pandemic, that people were not aware of this situation and that they weren't aware of our, our overcrowding. So on June 16th, 2021, we updated the community in a very thorough way and gave a current configuration of what school will look like in September and projections past and, and future that we have an overcrowding issue in the town of Milton. We have, we're running five elementary schools in four buildings. Our, our middle school has a large number of students, only 100 and something less than our high school. So I just want people to be aware that those, those issues continue to be part of the conversation. They have been every single year that I have been a school committee member, which is five. And so we appreciate the community's support and encourage more people to get involved in the conversation of how we might come to some conclusion about how to solve this problem. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And good luck tomorrow night. You're going to select board.
Yes, select board tomorrow night.
Our next meeting agenda items, I, we will, we will have our retreat on the 21st and then, um, then we will have a meeting in August. And I will imagine that at that meeting, we will talk about these programs of study. We will talk about whatever updates we have on the quality review, plans for school and what school is going to look like in terms of post COVID. I don't know if that's even a word you're allowed to use. And the reopening of school in September late. And if there's anything else that comes up, obviously we'll add it as we go along. Yes, Dr. Craighead?
I'm just wondering if we can, I'm sure this is going to happen, but I just want to say it out loud. If we can get the August date before we meet next.
Yes, I think, I think it's the Wednesday before, um, the Wednesday before. So school opens on the first?
When does school start? Oh, yeah, I have it here.
Right? Thank you.
Yeah, it opens on the first.
Right, so my guess it would be the 25th.
August 25th.
Yep, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about us having enough time for this retreat.
Yeah, we're going to have to find another time as well. It's not going to be enough time. Yes.
Yeah, so we're going to have to find another day.
I'm going to send that dual vote that I was going to send last time. But we start with the 21st. At least that'll get us somewhere.
Yep.
Or I don't think we were going to be able to find something before then because of everyone's schedule. Right? All right, so this is the last school meeting of the year. But then I would just like to extend my thanks to everyone, the administrators, the teachers, the custodial staff, the police service workers, every single person who made this school year happen. I know there were lots of, um, lots of conversation around it, but I'm very proud of the work of the Milton Public Schools. I am very proud that we ran school in a pandemic, in a hybrid, in a remote, gave family options, were respectful of the needs of our community and we kept people safe. And I, I really can't say enough to all of you for all that. If I don't know, anyone wants to share their thoughts, I, I really just want to thank, I want to end the year on that note, to thank everyone for the hard work. It's, it was a hard year and I'm grateful that everyone is safe and moving into the summer.
I guess I, I would add, as the interim and newly appointed superintendent, I do want to thank members of the community. And I would once again ask what I asked for all year, a level of understanding, patience and flexibility. We've made it through one of the toughest, arguably the most challenging academic year of my educational profession. And I, I really call the community, this is a time, call, put a plea out to the community. This is the time to come together, put up, put our students first. Let's set aside our differences, work collaboratively and let's push forward in a positive, in a productive way. And we're looking forward to a new school year. We had a call with the commissioner today. We were once again reminded that we will be in school full time, five days a week, no social distance, no mask, all things on the table, including bus transportation, I mean, transportation, sports, performing fine arts, PE, chorus, the whole nine yards. So that in itself is something that's optimistic that we all look for. But more importantly, I, I call on the members of the Milton community to really come together and spend together and push forward in a positive way. So thank you all for your support and look forward to a productive summer, in a positive new year.
I hope everyone has a peaceful summer. I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union and non-union personnel in accordance with Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, and for the approval of minutes. We will adjourn directly from executive session, not to return to open session. This is a roll call vote. Member Ross Denny?
Aye.
Member White? Yes. Member Abba Hart, yes. Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Dr. Carroll?
Yes.
Happy summer, everyone. Stay safe.